Good evening, everybody. How are you doing? Next to Beckett Howell. Pursuant to the Open College Meeting Act, Chapter 231, this meeting law of 1935, this meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on July 8, 2024, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue on July 12, 2024. All municipal clerks of the township and boroughs within the regional district have been notified and requirements for this posting was met on July 8. Moving to stand for the pledge, Antonio Lombardo, our former representative, will lead us to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Mr. Scott, any changes to the executive judgment?
Yes, Mr. President. In addition to the items that noted on the agenda preprinted prior to the meeting, the board also discussed exception number three, student suspension report, and in exception number seven, the board had a discussion about a potential civil plaintiff.
Thank you. May I have the motion to approve the notice on August 28, 24?
Mr. Cobb?
Second.
The second.
Any discussion, Board? Not hearing any discussion. Motion, please.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Cowherd?
Stand.
Stand. Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. As a reminder, the communication on file in the business of the chair's office. We're going to have our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Just at this time, I'm actually going to go down to the podium. We have a number of presentations this evening, so I invite all of our Board of Education members to join me down in the pit. Oh, good evening, everyone. And thank you, Antonio, for setting the stage tonight for us this evening. I want to first start off by... Does everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. By welcoming a new Board of Education member for Howell, a Board of Education representative, Mrs. Cowherd. She will be serving on the Board of Education through December of 2024. So, thank you. Also, I'd like to just take a moment to recognize and honor Mr. Parisi for his years of service to the Freehold Regional Board of Education. He served as the Howell Board Representative for four and a half years. Mr. Parisi was instrumental in supporting the board and the district, served on the policy and the finance committees, and we thank him for his service to the Howell community and the greater Freehold Regional High School District. We do have a plaque for him, so we will make sure that we get that to him. Also, we have each year, I think many of you know, we have an Executive Student Cabinet. They work closely with our Board of Education and with myself and Dr. Howell. So, I am so excited. Here representing us from Howell High School, Nick Tuttoro is going to set the stage for us. He's going to review our meeting and some of what we discussed, but also talk about kind of the culture and climate and how this school year started off for him at Howell High School. So, Nick, come on up. I didn't have the roots at our last meeting.
I did not.
Yes, but we are happy you are here.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Nick Tuttoro, and I have the honor of serving as a representative of Howell High School on the Executive Student Cabinet. The Executive Student Cabinet is comprised of six senior representatives, one carefully selected from each school within our district. It functions as a cohesive team, meeting monthly with Dr. Hazel, Dr. Howell, and the central office administrators to form a focused student group. Our primary goal is to advocate for the interests and perspectives of our fellow students. Each member of our cabinet brings a unique voice to the table, sharing valuable insights gleaned from their respective schools. As we embark on the 2024-2025 school year, we are excited to actively support the implementation of Compass 3.0 and play a pivotal role in the middle states accreditation process. We are committed to lending our voices and providing constructive feedback. Our aim is to ensure that the student perspective is at the forefront of these important initiatives. We've got a great start to the school year, and I've already noticed the difference in our school culture and climate, largely because of the change in the cell phone practices. We are more engaging and focused in our classes and have noticed the positive impact on our interactions with students in our classes and at lunch. We've noticed an increase in interactions with teachers as well. Students are reaching out for help independently instead of using their phones to look at the answers and take the easy way out. Student Cabinet believes that this rule will reveal long-term progress and strengthen the academic and social aspects of our student body and overall assemble a healthier community for students and staff all year long. We look forward to collaborating with the Board of Education and the district administration to create a positive and enriching learning environment for all students. Thank you.
Great job. Also, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Scarlett. She is our Freehold Township Sampino at Crystal Catholic High School. And for each school, when we come out for our board meetings, our Executive Student Cabinet members will share about their school and about how the year is going. But, Nick, a great start, big shoes to fill as we venture out to the other schools and have our presentations. But, you know, as Nick stated, this school year has been off to a tremendously positive start. A credit to our students, our families, and our staff. We had Back to School Night last Thursday, which were extremely well attended by our families. I was in attendance over at Coltsneck High School. Other programs also take place the evening of Back to School Night. We had our multilingual families, and all of our ninth-grade parents were able to meet the school counselor that that child will have over the four-year period. So, just a real energizing night with our families. Our principals kicked off the evening in each of their auditoriums, you know, to welcome and greet all of the parents. And we really think that's a tremendous way to kind of start off our school year. And then they have an opportunity to go in and visit all of their child's classrooms and meet the teachers. So, I'm just really proud of the opening of the school year and how well those Back to School Nights ran with the support of our supervisors and our teams and our teachers. You know, among our work, and Nick hit upon this, with our strategic plan and our middle states, you know, processes that we'll be going through this year. But this year was really important, especially when I went out to speak to all of our faculties. There are really two areas that I want to focus in on this year, and it's really about elevating expectations in all of our schools. And first is student attendance, and the second was, as Nick mentioned, the cell phones. It is so important that our students are in school each and every day. Every day counts. Our teachers are connecting and engaging our students, and that is the most important. And, you know, we will be holding them to very high expectations as it pertains to maintaining excellent attendance this school year. Around the cell phones, this is really a push toward, you know, really supporting teachers and supporting students to stay off social media, to not have that distraction in the classroom, and really just focus in on the teacher and the instruction and the peers in the class so that we can optimize their engagement and ultimately their learning and their growth. So, I am really proud of our students and our family and our staff for really, you know, going strong this school year. And I think our kids are really adjusting. And we're seeing, you know, even if there is a moment in the classroom where, you know, there's an opportunity at the end of the period as they're getting their things together, at least they're talking and engaging with each other, and they're not retreating to the phone. And that was something that was very, very important to all of the teachers and supervisors and the administrative team. And I know we have to kind of keep the pedal, you know, to the metal and make sure that we are on top of everything, but I know that we will be extremely successful in this effort and being able to successfully engage our students in their program. And I know each child is going to grow, be having that full immersion in their experience. So, that concludes one piece, and we do have presentations this evening. Our first is to really honor and recognize some very special folks in this school district, and that's our paraprofessionals, who work very closely with some of our classified students and students that are in need in our buildings. And we have six recipients this evening that we want to really personally recognize for their dedication and service. So, to start us off, and thank you, Mr. Bronneman. He helped, he put this together. He is a whiz with AI and different types of... Yeah, so we've got everybody, and everybody is represented here, so, yeah, very exciting. So, for Coltsneck, I do want to invite up the supervisor, Ms. Kelly Fitz Henry. And Ms. Fitz Henry oversees the Special Education Department as part of the administrative team at Coltsneck High School. And our board representative for Coltsneck is Mr. Acetola, so if he could please come up. So, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Susan Burns. Mrs. Burns has been a paraprofessional with the Freehold Regional High School District for eight years. She began at Marlboro High School and is currently at Coltsneck High School. Mrs. Burns provides academic, emotional, behavioral supports to students in our LLD program, Learning Language and Disability Program. She is the face of Coltsneck High School in our community and serves as a job coach for students that are on the job site and participate in our Student Transition Employment Program or STEP program. She's responsible, reliable, holds students to high achievable standards. Mrs. Burns' experience, calm, and professional demeanor is vital to the student's success at Coltsneck High School. Mrs. Burns, please come up to be recognized. Congratulations. Also, Mrs. Burns, would you join standing here?
We're going to do it.
Yeah. Our second recipient, and I know the supervisor of the program, I'm not sure if she's here this evening, Ms. Tristan Epstein. But also would like to invite up Ms. McCollum, our Board of Education member for Freehold. I'm sorry. And, yep, the principal, Dr. Ross, is here as well, so if you'd like to come up. But our recipient for Freehold is Divya Pita Bali. And she has been an amazing addition. I met her out in the lobby before. Addition to Freehold High Schools and the Freehold High School family. Though only beginning with us two years ago, she encompasses the qualities of a true colonial and treats her colleagues and students just like her family. Each challenge she confronts with a smile and enthusiasm. She easily develops rapport with the students. In the classroom, she's an advocate for student independence and challenges students academically, often assisting in small groups and working with students one-on-one to enhance their skills. Her dedication and commitment to our students is commendable. Please come up to receive your award. Our recipient for Freehold Township High School is Anne Appalala, Supervisor Rachel Guff, and Mrs. Higley, the Board of Education member. Mr. Dillon is here this evening on behalf of Mrs. Guff. Mrs. Appalala has been an invaluable member of the Freehold Regional High School District for the past five years. Her exceptional dedication, compassion, and professionalism has significantly enriched our educational community. Her abilities include building strong collegial relationships with all stakeholders, most importantly, our students, demonstrating professionalism in all her interactions, and fostering an atmosphere of mutual respect and collaboration. Mrs. Appalala is a consistent presence, and her dependability has been a cornerstone of our team. Anne Appalala, please come up to receive your award. At this time, I'd like to invite up Mrs. Bromley, Special Education Supervisor for Howell High School, Mr. Bruno, Board President, Mrs. Lavin, and Mrs. Cowherd. Our recipient, paraprofessional recipient, is Nikki Estrada. Mrs. Estrada has been a paraprofessional at Howell High School for two years. Mrs. Estrada assists students in the self-contained program at Howell High School. She is reliable, dependable, a dedicated professional who is all about her students. She is a natural, dealing with the students and with any challenging situation that may arise. Mrs. Estrada has a calming, reassuring presence with all of her students, both in and out of the classroom. Please come up, Mrs. Estrada, to accept your award. Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay. Manalpin High School. I'd like to invite up Mr. Hein, Mrs. Capiello, and also, Mrs. Bruno is not here this evening, but is the Manalpin Board of Education rep. Our recipient for Manalpin High School, Judy Caspararis, has been a paraprofessional with the district for 16 years. She has been a vital thread to our school community, weaving together support and guidance and warmth in ways that resonate throughout our classrooms and our corridors. No matter what she is asked, she accommodates with a smile. In the ever-changing landscape of schedules, she pivots effortlessly and is the true embodiment of flexibility and adaptability. When faced with challenges, she gently guides her students to find solutions, instilling them with grit and flexibility that we know life demands. Judy Caspararis, please come up. And from Marlboro High School, Assistant Principal and Supervisor of Special Education, Jennifer Delet, and Board of Education Vice President, Michael Messinger. Our recipient from Marlboro High School, I'm not sure if she's here this evening, Willie Beth Arias. But Ms. Arias has been a paraprofessional in Marlboro High School for seven years. Ms. Arias embraces every student she works with and looks for ways to best support their individual needs. She has served as a one-to-one para as well as worked in our LLD program, Learning Language Disabilities Program, while continuously supporting students' academic, social, and emotional needs. Ms. Arias brings a positive perspective and is helpful with all of her colleagues and demonstrates true professionalism each and every day. I think we're going to have Ms. Delet, she will present that to Ms. Arias tomorrow.
Is that good?
That's great. So, I take a quick picture here. Let's move forward a little bit. Our eyes will be rolling only a quick bit. Congratulations. Thank you all, and also to the supporting families of these terrific paraprofessionals. We have two other presentations this evening, but we're going to segue to our annual assessment report. We will be reporting out on the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment and the DLM, Dynamic Learning Maps, for 2024. These are really assessments that students take kind of early on in their high school career. We utilize the data from these tests to best prepare students, obviously, for their high school coursework, but also in preparation for the state-required assessment, the New Jersey GPA, that students take in their junior year. So, I invite up Dr. Huff, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, who will share with us those results. Thank you, Dr. Hazel.
So, as Dr. Hazel mentioned, I'm going to speak about the results for our NJSLA ELA and Math, our Grade 11 Science, and our DLM results, which is an assessment for our specialty students. I'm going to start with the NJSLA, just with a little overview of what this assessment is and who takes it. So, the NJSLA consists of the English Language Arts for Grade 9. In math, it would be any student who's enrolled in Algebra 1, typically in grade 10. Geometry, or Algebra 2 if Algebra 1 was already taken in middle school. And then for science, it's all Grade 11 students, even if they are not enrolled in a science class. So, to give you a little overview of our data, you can see the scores here. And we saw some bright spots. In fact, there was a 2.1% increase in our ELA scores from last year. There was a 6.2% increase in our Algebra 1 scores. And then we saw a little bit in geometry, a little bit of a dip. As Dr. Hazel mentioned, the point of the NJSLA and how we use it is to inform our own instruction and our professional development opportunities, but mostly, if you remember, these are underclassmen where we get this data and we can utilize it to identify students maybe who need additional supports, to identify any changes we might want to make in our classroom instruction. And as sort of a benchmark, especially given that we're a high school district and we have four years, well, really, three years to prepare them for the graduation assessment, the NJGPA, we use it to make sure that we communicate with students and parents about how students are progressing in school and how we can support them and make them prepared for post-secondary education, workforce, et cetera. And so, in that way, this data is extremely beneficial to us on so many levels. If you remember from our July presentation about NJGPA, we did see lots of increases and jumps with our students, and that's because over time, as we put these supports in place and students continue to be educated with us through our classroom instruction, we do see their growth. And this is the beginning of that. And we utilize this data to, you know, help the students make that jump over their high school career. And so, I think because we are seeing, you know, some strong scores and jumps, these are all good signs, and we're confident that we will continue to move the students forward as they prepare for NJGPA in all levels of grade. As I mentioned, even when we did the NJGPA data, we also wanted to make sure that we look at all students. Our goal, our strategic plan, our goal of the district is to make sure that we service the needs of all students. And so, as we look at our subgroup data, we also want to make sure in each per subject areas that we pay also special attention to any student maybe where there is additional supports and growth needed. And at the end, I'll talk a little bit about some of the things that we put into place. But even as we're speaking right now, we've already done our after-school tutoring program. We want to make sure that we get an early jump and do supports for students right away. And having this data, you know, early in the school year really helps us to do that, and that's something that we do immediately. So, as you can see, I have our presentation here with our subgroup data for ELA, for geometry, and paying special attention to our multilingual learners, our special needs students, and our economically disadvantaged students for Algebra 1, and for Algebra 2, and science. For the next part of the presentation, as Dr. Hazel mentioned, I'm also reporting out on the 2024 Dynamic Learning Maps, or the DLM. And to give you a little bit of an overview of the DLM, in 2015, New Jersey adopted the Dynamic Learning Maps, which replaced the Alternate Proficiency Assessment, or the APA, in Language Arts and Methodematics. or the APA, in Language Arts and Mathematics. This alternate assessment for classified students with the most significant intellectual disabilities in Grades 3 through 8, as well as Grade 11, which is what I'm reporting on tonight. These essential elements and skill statements are derived from the Common Core standards and are used for instruction and assessment. The DLM test specifications and essential elements are currently available and accessible during the DLM website. As you can see from our data, our students performed very well. This data is actually very similar to the report last year. And so you can see the continued growth with our students and the achievement that they're making through our special needs programs, which is admirable. As Dr. Hazel mentioned and as I did, we use this data to put into some different intervention strategies so that we can continue to improve our instruction and learning for students. Within this, we provide different professional development opportunities for teachers on instructional strategies to address any areas of need that we might see through the data and our analysis. We provide tutoring opportunities for students after school, and as I said before, to become that. And this is the opportunity too, through the tutoring programs, where we sit down, our counselors sit down, and individually speak with students and their parents about different ways that we can support them and the opportunities for them. We also provide Title I and Title III Summer Jump Start Programs. That's for our economically disadvantaged and for our ML learners, any struggling students. And we also have an Extended School Year Program, or ESY, that supports all opportunities for our special needs students in the summer. Thank you. Of course, any questions? A guideline where they should be? Well... Well, you can, yeah, you can do a comparison with the state in any one of the subgroups. But basically, what we want is everyone to be proficient. Proficiency is the goal. And so any student that's not proficient, these students would be identified, and then we would, you know, perform those extra intervention strategies, as I stated. That's a great question. They're both. We offer both opportunities for students. We've found, especially for students who maybe are in activities or work, that sometimes the virtual option is good because they can come in in the evening, and we do have teachers that are willing to do that. So that balance of in-person after-school and virtual in the evening, we have found to be very effective. Okay. Any other questions? I mean, anyone can come to after-school tutoring. So we have local tutoring, and it's open to all students. But we also want to make sure that students who we have identified as maybe they're not proficient or they're close, or maybe there are areas where we can help them to improve, we would specifically reach out to them and their parents individually and say, "Hey, you know, this is where you are right now. This is where your child is. This is the goal. We want to get you to proficiency. We want to make sure that you, you know, pass these graduation assessments." And so we, of course, would offer tutoring to anyone, and definitely we have targeted tutoring pursuits to need it. Any other questions? Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to ask, I'm going to transition to our next presentation, which is to talk about all the program opportunities that we have for students. And I'm going to call out Ms. Stephanie Meckman. She's our Administrative Supervisor, who oversees the Magnet Program and our Magnet Programs, and we're going to go through all of the program opportunities that we have for our students. Our district is so... I mean, I can't be more proud of the different ways that we offer so many opportunities for students. So Ms. Meckman and I are going to just give you some overview of some of the things that we do. But of course, all students can follow traditional, you know, academic program in any of the high schools and get a fantastic education. We have open access. Students can choose, you know, Amherst classes, AP classes, dual enrollment, you know, everything that we have available. And so of course, that's a route, right, for students to take. But we're also going to talk tonight about some of the other opportunities that we have. These include our Magnet Programs, our IB Programs, our CTE Pathways, any off-campus dual enrollment that they can do through Brookdale. And of course, students also have the ability to apply to vocational programs through Monmouth County. I'm going to start by talking a little bit about our CTE Career Programs, our Pathway Programs. So CTE stands for Career and Technical Education. These Pathway Programs, as you can see, we have Web Design, Health Professions, and Cybersecurity. So Web Design is in Freehold High School, Freehold Township High School in Marlboro. We have Health Professions offered in Freehold High School and Manalapan High School, in Cybersecurity in Coltsnet, and then Howell. What's unique about the CTE Pathway Programs, if students choose to do this, and they do choose, is they are programs that begin in 10th grade. So students are already in the school, and then they may decide, they might hear from an information session, from their counselors, about these programs. What's neat about them is they're exploratory. They have a career focus, but essentially, students take these classes as electives. And they explore these programs and are exposed to real-world application and different ways of looking at these professions and hearing from industry professionals and all, you know, information coming from many different ways. And that's what makes them unique. They also are electives. So they have the ability to take these courses, one in 10th grade, one in 11th grade, one in 12th grade, and then have the opportunity to take, you know, everything else that they want to take in their school as well. In 11th and 12th grade, students may want to explore some of the career opportunities that are offered through Monmouth County Vocational District. This is in 11th and 12th grade. They have a variety of careers that they can explore, anything from trades to health programs. This is something that we make students aware of. They can even transfer into an early school if they're interested. If they're in a late school, but they're interested in a vocational school, we give them that opportunity. We want them to have that ability to do that. And so they can apply to these programs and then attend them as well, which is another choice, you know, that students have. Students can also do their requirements at school and then go off to Brookdale and take some classes there as electives and get college credit at the same time. Of course, we have dual enrollment classes offered within the school too, but they also have the opportunity to go on to campus and take classes there. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Meckman.
Good evening. I'm going to talk to you about our Magnet and IB Programs and what opportunities that provides, is provided for our students. So what's unique about our Magnet and IB Programs from the other programs that Dr. Huff has talked to you about, these require application in 8th grade. In fact, I start by going out in 7th grade in May to talk to students, to start planting the seeds, because we have so many opportunities for our almost 10,000 students. They need a little time as a family to process their options. So as you know, we have 14 different Magnet Programs, as well as two IB Programs spread out across the district. I like to think of our Magnet Programs as falling into three different categories. We have our STEM-focused Programs, our Humanities-focused Programs, and then our very unique Programs that have a defined classification and are in their own category. Our STEM Programs are Animal-Bodentable Sciences Program at Freehold Township High School, Computer Science at Freehold Borough High School, the International Baccalaureate Program at Freehold Township High School, which you're also going to see on the Humanities side because students get to choose the focus of the IB Program based on what classes they take within the program. So it can be a STEM-focused Program, and it can be a Humanities-focused Program. And finally, we have the Medical Sciences Magnet Program at Freehold Borough, and Science and Engineering at Manalapan. On the Humanities side of our Magnet and IB Programs, we have Business Administration at Marlboro High School, Global Studies at Freehold Township High School, Humanities right here at Howe High School, International Baccalaureate again at Freehold Township High School and Howell High School can have that Humanities focus depending on the child's interest. And then the Law and Public Service Program at Coltsnet High School. Then we have our unique Programs, which really stand on their own, specifically our Culinary Arts and Hospitality Management at Freehold Borough High School, our three fine-performing arts programs here at Howell High School, one for acting, one for dance, and finally for music, video, and production, which we have many of our students making sure that we sound and look good tonight. So thank you very much. You don't get applause being in the back, but thank you for being here tonight and dedicating your time to all of us. And then finally back to this, our Law Enforcement and Public Safety Magnet Program at Manalapan High School, and finally the maybe junior ROTC Magnet Program at Coltsnet. So when we talk to students... Mr. Post? Thank you. When we talk to students and parents about how they determine what the right program is for them, these are the four things we only zero in on. First of all, we call them Magnet Programs for a reason. It's about interest. It's about attraction and passion for the focus of the program. A child is going to be spending four years in these classes. It should be, you know, led with their interest. Do they have eagerness for academic challenge? Some of these programs are the most academically challenging offerings that we have in the district. So are these students eager for honors, AP, IB, dual enrollment classes where they're possibly earning college credit, sometimes even as freshmen in high school? Are they committed to four years of classes? When you choose a Magnet Program, that choice means you have less choice in terms of what other electives you can take. So with one choice means you have less others. So are you willing to make that choice when you're in 8th grade? And then finally, are you willing to change what your home high school would be? I grew up in Marlboro. Would I be willing to come all the way down here to Howell? If Mr. Rovman had been the principal back when I was in high school? Probably. But sometimes being in your home community is very compelling for children, and that's why our traditional high school program is also such a huge draw for our students. So all this information is available on the district website, with our Magnet site, with our IB site. Our Magnet Program and IB Application opened up just last week, Wednesday, September 18. It is open through just about midnight on November 4. So they have about six weeks for a very short application. And our timeline... Oh, we're missing a slide. It's okay. I can talk about it. Our timeline starts in May of children's 7th grade year. I go out to all the middle schools, all transcending middle schools to talk to all 7th graders in this presentation very similar as to what options are available to them, but specifically the ones they have to apply to when in 8th grade. Our Application opened up last week, as I said, when students are in 8th grade. And starting this week, we had our Open Houses. Each program offers an evening where students and parents, and we do encourage entire families, to come to the school to see a presentation, not just by the adults, but most importantly, the students. Oh, thank you. Our timeline is up there. Beautiful. Thank you, Mr. Post. So in September through October, we have Open Houses. This week in particular, we have Law and Public Service at Coltsnet on Monday, and last night was Howell High School IB Program. And then we continue through the end of October. The Application closes in November. In December, we administer the entrance exam on a Saturday in December. The audition and the interview information goes out to those applicants. We interview and audition in January, and then students are notified of their options, what their status is, by mid to late February. No, interview. So like I said, everything, we have very robust information on both our sites, on both the Magnet and IB sites, where we have videos, we have all our deadlines. We have so much input from our students showing what their life is like in the program to really show, highlight all the amazing opportunities that we have for our almost 10,000 students.
Thank you, Dr. Huff and Ms. Meckman. Again, as a district, we are so proud of all of the opportunities that we can offer to our students. Our goal is to ensure that we can preserve all these programs and grow programs over time for students, really in the segue of dual enrollment and any areas of interest that our students and families may have. We believe these programs are truly the hallmark of the Freehold Regional High School District. Any questions?
Yeah, for Howell, it's just for the Howell students. For Freehold Township High School, they can come from any school in the district. I mean, right now, we're, we don't, you know, we are able with our population, there's enough interest here to be able to, you know, fulfill the program and have capacity.
Okay. We are going to assume our seats back at the board table for the formal agenda.
I don't think people in the Freehold Regional community truly realize what we offer with our learning centers and all our programs. It's amazing. Mr. Post, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are. Some changes to the pre-printed agenda. The first is a yellow sheet paper in the back of the room that has additions to existing resolutions, both in G5, approval of honorarium, and G16, approval of retirements. In addition, there's a new resolution to be offered. It'll be G16. I'll read it into the record now. Whereas the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education seeks to provide all students with educational instructors capable of providing students with the best educational experience consistent with New Jersey state law and board policy. Whereas the Board receives certain information regarding actions and or statements made by Employee Number 9881, which create concern for his or her ability to fulfill their job responsibilities consistent with board policies, regulations, and known expectations. Whereas Employee Number 9881's alleged actions and or statements are deemed by the superintendent to be potential deviation from normal physical or mental health, it is hereby resolved that the Board, upon recommendation of the superintendent and consistent with NJSA 18A:16-2, hereby require Employee Number 9881 to undergo a complete mental and physical examination. Again, that's G17. In addition to that, I've one correction on the agenda. It's under Item G2, approval of appointments. And it's Employee Carnella Narduli changed salary from Step 1, $52,852, Step 1, $52,860, pro-rated per annum. So that's just a correction of an existing resolution. That's all I have, Mr. Post.
Thank you. We're ready to take... We're ready to take Personnel and Negotiations. Oh, Public Participation? I didn't see anybody for Public Participation tonight, so we're going to go right over that. There's no Public Participation tonight? Anybody? No? Okay. We're going to go to G, G1 through G17, Personnel and Negotiations. May I have a motion?
Offer.
Any discussion, Board? May I have a roll call?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Ms. Capiella?
Yes.
Mrs. Coward?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Messenger?
Yes.
Mr. Brunnell?
Yes. We're going to take H1 through I3, which is Programmed Operations, Buildings, Transportation, and Physical Plan. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Discussion? Not hearing a discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Ms. Capiella?
Yes.
Ms. Coward?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Messenger?
Yes.
Mr. Brunnell?
Yes. We're going to take J1 through K1, Educational Program and Administration. May I have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion, Board? Not hearing a discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Acetola?
I'm going to abstain from K1, which involves myself, but yes, I'm.
So it just says to yourself, right, Mr. Acetola?
Yeah, just to myself.
Ms. Capiella?
Yes, on everything, but K1, I abstain as it relates to myself also.
Mrs. Coward?
And Dr. Higley.
No problems. Gotcha. But K1 also.
Mrs. Coward?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes, except I abstain in K1 as regards to Mr. Voice's background.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Messenger?
Yes.
Mr. Brunnell?
Yes. And I am abstaining K1 myself.
All motions carried.
Okay. Does any board members have all business to discuss? Any all business members? Any all business? Okay. Any new business? New? Any new?
If I may, Mr. Brunnell, I just want to once again extend congratulations to all of the paraprofessionals who received awards this evening.
I'd like to thank the administration for the presentations tonight. These programs are very important and the public should know, we all have to all hear. Any new business? So the only new business I have that I want to remind the board about is the Band Festival, which is Tuesday night, October 8th.
Yes.
And it's here.
Yes.
At Howell High School. At 6:00. To try to come out to see that? I think Dr. Hazel sent that out last week as an invite. Any other business? Any other new business members?
Mr. Brunnell, I believe that the Band Festival is at 6.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? I have to say, has she had false this title? May I have a second? All of those in favor? Meeting adjourned.